If you hit, you get the iPhone, just hit, hit the hide button next to the hang up button, the red hang up button, and then that should give you the, the, uh, display where you can mute.
Thanks, Matt.
You're welcome. It's for iPhone users.
Okay.
All right, any other technological issues that anyone's experiencing that we need to talk through before we, uh, run through the agenda real quick?
None on my end.
Any other technological problems, other council members?
No, I'm fine.
I'm fine.
All right, those who are physically present, are we ready to go?
Ready.
All right. And with that.
We'll work through it.
The regular meeting of the Mishawaka Common Council for Monday, April 6th, 2020 will please come to order. This evening, due to the ongoing public health crisis, we will be conducting the first common council meeting in the history of Mishawaka that allows for remote participation by council members, the public, and the media. In order for the meeting to be conducted in a businesslike fashion, council members who are participating telephonically are reminded to keep their phones on mute until their name is called as part of the call or a council member wishes to make a comment or ask a question during the meeting. After they have finished speaking, council members are reminded to once again place their phone on mute. Members of the public who are participating telephonically are asked to keep their phone on mute throughout the meeting with the exception of the public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-09. At the appropriate point in the, in this public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their phones for purposes of submitting comments one at a time. If there are no other questions, then at this time, please join us in, uh, the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would, those of you here, let's remain standing in remembrance for those who are suffering as a result of the Corona COVID-19 virus. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
... and to the republic which stands one nation under guard, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaide? Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
Let the record show that all nine council members are present.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 16th, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then the meetings will, the minutes, I'm sorry, will stand approved as received from the clerk's office. We have no petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorials, nor any report of special committees, so we will move into ordinances on first reading.
Yes, Mr. President, we have proposed ordinance number 2020-10, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka amending ordinance 5680, 2020 salary ordinance for appointed officers and employees for all departments of the city. This, the petitioner is, not petitioner, but they are requesting second reading to this, this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Uh, the chair will now entertain a motion to suspend our council rules in order to hold first and second reading of proposed ordinance 2020 this evening.
So moved.
You, you need to state your name if you're calling in.
Mike Compton, so moved.
Matt Mamalenti, second.
That Kate already.
Also, Mr. Volker beat you to it, but thank you, Mr. Mamalenti. Uh, there's been a motion and a second to suspend our council rules and hold, uh, first and second reading this evening on proposed ordinance 2020-10. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
And they need to understand, this needs to be a unanimous vote. Mrs. DeMaide? Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons? Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker? Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yeah.
So that it was a 9 to 0 vote?
Thank you. Uh, in light of the fact that there is no committee report, we will now move directly into council consideration of proposed ordinance 2020-10. Mr. Mayor, uh, if you or another representative of the administration like to suspend the proposed ordinance?
Sure. My members are here to speak in favor of ordinance number 2020-10. Uh, this is, uh, an ordinance that allows us to pay if we have a need to do emergency stay-at-home, uh, working conditions for our workers. And so, uh, what this does is it makes it compatible, uh, the governor's, uh, executive order makes it compatible with our salary ordinance. Uh, it also keeps us legal so that we are not, uh, in, um, in violation of ghost employment law. Uh, the prosecutor has stated that he would, uh, use his discretion not to pursue such violations, uh, anticipating that they will occur with this epidemic, but, uh, we would prefer not to rely on any discretion, and we wanted to have our ordinance, uh, be legal so that we don't have to rely on that discretion. Um, it also will clean up language, State Board of Accounts, uh, and so we get audited every year, and the State Board of Accounts is pushing, uh, all cities and towns to do these types of ordinance. This ordinance is very similar to one that many communities are, um, are approving around the state of Indiana, and, uh, I would ask for your favorable recommend or approval of this.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mayor Wood? Let's start with those of you who are on the phone, first of all. Hearing none, are there any questions, uh, on the part of any council members who are in attendance in the chambers?
Mr. President, I would also note that, uh, we have very few staff members who are currently working at home. It's our intent, uh, as our, as all of our, our services are considered essential, to be at work for as long as possible at times such as these that our public depend on us and our services the most, and it's our intention to be here at work, provide those services uninterrupted.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we appreciate your comments and, uh, your support of our employees during this time of crisis.
Thank you.
Are there any, uh, council members who wish to speak at this point? Let's start with those of you who are on the phone. Hearing no one, then I'll ask if any other council members in attendance wish to speak. Let me just end then by thanking our council attorney, Mike Triple, for his work, uh, in drafting this ordinance. Again, uh, we appreciate the mayor's comments and the administration's support, uh, with regard to the passage of this ordinance and the things that they are doing to support our employees and their families during this time of crisis. Um, I would suggest that this ordinance is good not just for our employees, but also for the community. It does nothing but help, uh, the economy here in Mishawaka to continue to have our employees be able to spend money at restaurants, to, you know, pay their bills, to be able to keep a roof over their head and support their families. Um, we're certainly going to have to be cognizant of our financial circumstance as we move forward, and undoubtedly we'll be talking and working with the administration with regard to where we're at and where we go from here. Uh, but from my perspective, um, I absolutely support this ordinance, and I believe that, um, uh, we need to look at every, uh, bit of discretionary spending that we can put off and any other actions that we can take in order to support our employees and our families as they attempt to work through, uh, their crisis, this crisis. Um, so with that, I will call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide? Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons? Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the vote is 9 to 0 in favor of passage of the ordinance.
Thank you. We have no resolutions, so we will move into ordinances on second reading.
Yes, Mr. President, we have ordinance number 2020-09, an ordinance declaring an emergency and determining the expenditure of additional funds for the year ending December 31st, 2020. This is in various departments in the amount of $1.228,794.
Thank you. Uh, in light of the unique nature of this evening's meeting, we're going to dispense with the committee report and move directly into, uh, second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-09. Um, Madam Controller, uh, would you like to speak to this ordinance?
Yes, thank you. Members of the council, Mr. President, I'm here to speak on this additional, a number of items have come up that needed adjustments in the budget. The first one is the payment for our new aerial ladder truck. Two payments are required this year and in future years, and the budget only included one payment, so just correct that. Second item, the time the budget was being put together, it appeared that, and we were hopeful, that PSAP would find a different funding source. And as it turned out, as we all know, that did not happen. So between public safety lit and CEDIT, we had to work, um, PSAP back into the budget with the other number of items we had for the 2020 budget. And this amount corrects that, and we are fully funding the CEDIT, I'm sorry, fully funding the PSAP as in previous years. Um, the next item is the sidewalking curb 50/50 program. This typically, in the past, had its own fund, you know, a very small amount, and it just makes sense that we put it into CEDIT so we don't have to come every year and do an additional appropriation with what the citizens pay, and we match it with our payment. To set aside $20,000 in the CEDIT fund, and we will only spend the match to what the citizens contribute for their part of the 50/50 sidewalk improvement. And the last item is, an opportunity came about for our fire department to purchase a refurbished ambulance, and this provides us with, uh, our fifth ambulance, which will be used as a spare. And typically, a new ambulance would have cost $320,000 this year, and they were able to save quite a bit of money, and we only needed $198,000, and we were able to use our new ambulance fund that was put in place in 2019, which received in 10% of all ambulance revenue, so this is a great use of this fund, and exactly what we wanted to use it for. If anyone has any questions?
Thank you. Um, are there any questions for the controller, and let's begin with those council members who are participating telephonically?
Yes, Mr. President, Matt Mamalenti, um, thank you, Ms. Miller. Just a quick question regarding the sidewalk and curb fund. You did mention it's a, a small amount typically. Um, if you can just be a little bit more specific or ballpark, how, how many citizens take advantage of this, uh, program in terms of dollar amount in 2019 or so?
Um, in terms of dollar amount, it, it usually runs between $10,000 to $16,000.
And that's our contribution, the city's contribution?
Yeah.
Okay.
I budgeted a little bit more. You're welcome. I just budgeted a little bit more in case we didn't have to come back again.
Sure. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mamalenti. Anyone else, any other council member participating telephonically who wishes to ask a question at this time?
Yes, Mr. President, um, if I could. Ms. Miller, if, could you, um, do you have information on the ambulance that was purchased? Specifically, I'm wondering, I know it's refurbished, but do you have any idea how old it is? Um, is this, you have any idea when it was new?
Brandon?
Mr. Compton, for your benefit, the controller is consulting with the mayor with regard to the age of the ambulance.
Very good.
Were you able to hear that, Mr. Compton?
A thousand miles on it, is that what I heard?
Okay. I stand corrected.
You have incredibly good ears, Mr. Compton, nice work.
So it's got a thousand miles on it and was a demo unit? So technically, it's new?
Yeah, I, I was, I was mistaken that it was, I was thinking it was a refurbished one.
But I think you're both right.
That we got from someone else.
Okay, very good, thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Any other, any other council members participating telephonically who wish to pose a question at this point? Hearing none, then I will turn to my colleagues who are here in the chambers. Thank you, Madam Controller. We will now move into public comments regarding proposed ordinance 2020-09. Any members of the public who are on the call who wish to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2020-09, please unmute, unmute your phone and begin by stating your name and address for the record. All right, hearing no one, uh, we will then invite anyone wishing to speak against proposed ordinance 2020-09, uh, who is also on the phone. If you would, please unmute your, your phone and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, uh, I will now ask if there are any council members who wish to speak, beginning with those council members who are participating telephonically. Any of the council members who are here in the chambers wish to speak? Uh, taking over the earlier comment, thank you, uh, Madam Controller, for your work on this, you know, uh, it, it, in my mind, and this is absolutely an essential, uh, piece of governmental business for us to take care of this evening, particularly in light of the, uh, current public health crisis and the connection to the public safety, um, items that you, you summarized for us. Um, I will say for the, add for the record that the mayor and I have spoken, and at this point in time, uh, he hasn't indicated that he feels as though we as a council need to take steps, as have been taken in other communities, to generate, um, an overall crisis fund, if you will, to get us through, um, uh, the coming months. However, um, I have indicated to the mayor, and I am confident that, um, others will agree, that the council stands ready to work with the administration as additional funding becomes necessary, um, particularly with regard to public safety needs as we move through this time of crisis. Um, and with that, I will call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons? Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the proposed ordinance passes 9 to 0.
Thank you. Uh, in light of the, uh, times in which we, in which we live, we will, uh, defer on conducting any public comments under privilege of the floor. We have no unfinished business, so we will move into new business at this point. And I believe, uh, Mayor Wood has some information and updates that he would like to share with the council and the public.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. President, council members, David Mayer, here to give you some updates on where we are. Uh, our public safety departments, uh, you'd be very proud of them, they are, uh, keeping up with these ever-changing times, still delivering outstanding public service. Uh, they're up to the task, we're actually, interestingly, seeing a little bit less run volume right now in both police and fire departments, uh, but we are making, uh, coronavirus calls at the fire department, uh, up to scene A today where we've had to run those. The interesting thing about those is that when we make that run, we have to pull the rig out of service for about an hour to disinfect. Uh, so we have just bought a new piece of equipment that we think will cut that down to about 20 minutes, uh, and so it'll be offline for about 20 minutes till we get it back, uh, but, uh, we're waiting that, but, uh, we're, we're still managing to, uh, meet the run volume. The new ambulance, uh, will come in very handy. Um, now, we called a little bit of an audible on that, so, uh, we were due to buy a demo unit that was light duty, much smaller box, uh, but the, uh, our, uh, the manufacturer ended up selling it and then extending us the price, so I didn't tell the controller this, but, uh, we paid just slightly more for the new ambulance, but it has the same box that we use on our other ambulances, so it's standard across the board with our other ambulances. Uh, the, so it's essentially brand new, it is lighter duty, uh, so it probably could not handle the, uh, frontline call volume that we would typically throw at one of our ambulances, uh, that, you know, wouldn't hold up to the test of time, uh, but it'll serve great as a backup ambulance, and, um, it's got, like I said, about a thousand miles on it, and that's mainly because they had to drive it in from Canada where it's from. Uh, so we got a great value there, and we appreciate the manufacturer for working with us, uh, to allow us that option. Uh, we are well equipped so far with all PPE and other supplies at our public safety, uh, departments, we're still managing to get supplies, uh, in part through several sources, resources that we have, and then also, uh, through our clinic. Uh, we also know that, uh, I've been in contact with Senators Young and Braun and with Congresswoman Walorsky, and they're working on supply to make sure that we get what we need as well. Um, so, so far, so good. Um, we are, um, uh, still meeting our task force daily, if not ever, mostly every other day, we have the spot on the calendar daily, so we can meet daily, we're very nimble with that. If the conditions on the ground warrant, we will meet, if not, we'll, we typically will meet every other day. That's going well. Um, we have instituted, based on, uh, compliments involved, concerns about finances, we have instituted a hiring freeze in the city, and we are only doing the stuff that is pending right now. There are certain things, certain projects and such that are already out there, we're, we're completing, uh, but we are focused now on responding in response to them. So, uh, just as an example, we just authorized the purchase of masks. Medical-grade masks, but the cotton mask for, uh, all of our employees, in fact, several masks, uh, reserved for all of our employees. Pay for those, however, we'll get some for police and fire that we can use for, say, if they're, if they're coming into interaction with somebody who's made a call. Uh, so we'll get those typically for free for police and fire use. Um, our clinic, uh, is doing well, uh, in response to this. Um, we kind of call it the calm before the storm right now, we expect that volume will increase, uh, but as of now, uh, they're, uh, very capable of responding to, um, all of the, um, all of the, uh, calls that they're getting. In fact, they've administered about 25 to 30 tests, uh, for our employees as well as other employees in the area, all negative. It's important to note that. Uh, we're still, we still have access to testing, which is very good, uh, and the good, right now, the testing is typically 10 days and out until we get the result. Uh, we are, uh, within a very short amount of time, uh, we'll be able to get results within 48 hours, and within about three weeks, it'll be down to 24 hours testing. And priority will be given to our public safety personnel. Uh, so medical, first-line medical response, so where we send these tests to, first-line medical responders will be given priority, public safety officers will be given priority. Um, and also at our testing facility, uh, we are, uh, always a good neighbor, but in times of crisis, we try to be an especially a good neighbor, so, uh, we are also testing South Bend police and fire out of our facility here in Mishawaka, that we set up. So, uh, just a neighborly thing that, that we can do. Uh, and our employees are always given first priority, but public safety is also given first priority as well. Our staff, a little stressed, as you can imagine, but they're hanging in there valiantly and showing up to work, doing their jobs, performing our vital public services, coming up with new and innovative ways to do it. Our managers are scheduling different, maybe allowing a couple of people to work at home if they can, um, you know, coming up with unique rotations, but we're able to get the work done, and we're certainly here, uh, waiting, uh, on our citizens, uh, on their phone calls, uh, to respond to whatever needs they may have. Very proud of our staff, I know you'd be too. Uh, our public, uh, you know, we're, uh, it seems like I run the tattletale department right now, uh, we get a lot of calls in every day about, you know, somebody reporting on this door, or that door, or that they should be closed, or whatever. Uh, we do rely on our public, and we put the word out that our public needs to, uh, you know, heed the recommendations of the TDC and the governor's stay-at-home orders. Uh, we don't possibly have anywhere near enough police officers to go out and, um, you know, to, um, you know, pull people over, ask them where they're going, uh, whether it's, uh, essential travel or not, uh, you know, people coming through underneath the tape to play on the playground, or, uh, you name it, on and on and on. We just don't have enough. We're reliant on our public to heed those recommendations, and largely, they are doing it. In fact, uh, we just saw today, uh, interestingly enough, Google is tracking all of your data, uh, your cell data, your phone, uh, volume, and what it shows us when you put it on a map is that we are in an area that is, um, largely, uh, heeding those recommendations. Um, we are in an area that, uh, where you can see that our citizens are, um, you know, they're staying at home, they are social distancing, and so what that means is, is, uh, that we hope that that will mean, uh, less, uh, you know, infection in the future from this virus. So, uh, certainly, you know, anything can happen, but we're reliant on our citizens to follow those recommendations, and by tracking the mapping, uh, the data usage from phone, it looks like now, uh, we have reason to be optimistic about that, that's the need. We are, uh, you know, still serving our public where we can, we're going to do a leaf pickup program, uh, we always do a spring pass, we found a way to get that done and comply with all of our guidelines, uh, that will begin on April the 20th and run for a week. So, uh, all yard waste, uh, or leaf, uh, leaves and yard waste can be put out to the curb, will be by, uh, with this nice weather, we've seen a lot of people, uh, already starting to think about that. We've seen a lot of people already starting to think about that. And then we're, our cooperative efforts, we're doing, we're doing a lot to keep in touch with, whether it's St. Joe Hospital, I've been on the phone with our CEO, Chad Towner, on many occasions, and he is coming into our task force meeting this Wednesday to share with us what he's seeing, not just here locally, but he is also an officer of Trinity who has a very wide footprint around the country. So he will be very interesting to talk to, and he'll be sharing some information with us. We have, there's a command meeting that happens every day. We are, we participate with that. There's healthcare practitioners, as well as the health department, as well as fire departments represented. We will have police department represented, starting this week as well in that command meeting. I will be popping in at some point here this week on the elected officials and more of the higher level as they meet and do video conferencing. All of our meetings here, we have WebEx available now, so our task force is even WebEx, as well as Board of Public Works, be that way, as well as any other. While our IT department is behind me, I thank them very much. They've been very dedicated, working round the clock to make sure that technical capabilities can keep up with these ever-changing times. We are also, you know, meeting with, we've been in conversation with School City in Mishawaka, you know, that's pretty much, school year's pretty much done. Also participating, I'll be one of four mayors around the state to participate on a, on a training webinar, particularly for mayors and dealing with response to that. So I was invited to do that, so I appreciated that opportunity and feel like it's a way where we can help our neighbors out as well.
Is that true aim?
Well, yeah, loosely. And then lastly, and we talked a little bit about, you know, the council having some access to funding. HUD is helping us out. We just got word today, this afternoon, that HUD will be, has made available for the city of Mishawaka, we are an entitlement community, we will be receiving $282,000, or $282,298 specifically for COVID efforts in the city of Mishawaka. Again, specifically to the city of Mishawaka. That is from the CARE Act that President Trump signed into law on 3 March 27, 3/27, and from the passage of that, there's 45 days until dispersion. Anytime within that 45 days, we can expect to be reimbursed, and we can use those. We will be seeing what kind of requirements go along with that. We think it will be very loose, but we'll certainly make sure that we spend it on its intended use, but it is, as we know, it's for COVID-related expenses. We will certainly be audited on this, and so there will be some reporting to HUD on how we use it, but rest assured, we're in very good hands in the controller's office and in our redevelopment office to make sure that we use that, again, the way it's supposed to be. Just everything in a nutshell, I'm sure I'm forgetting all kinds of things, but we'll keep you posted as significant events occur. And as always, you can call me anytime, 24/7, 365 on myself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that update. Are there any questions from the council, beginning with those of you who are participating by phone?
Yes, Mr. President, Matt Malenti. Just wanted to thank the mayor for that information, very helpful information to pass along to the public as we receive emails, phone calls, et cetera. I do have a quick question regarding test availability, COVID-19 test availability. I don't expect you to know real-time inventory, but do you have an idea of how many tests we have available?
We have, we're getting, just here at the clinic, five a day. We have as many tests as we would ever, as we would need. I can't imagine a scenario. I think that the bottleneck is not the testing itself, it is the, it is getting the, you know, the response.
Results.
So right now, you know, that's 10 days. We're working, we'll have that down to two days here soon, and then down to one day, and then we think that'll also, you know, it'll filter down to the hospitals as well, where we're going to be getting much faster test results, even for the public.
Okay. And then just a follow-up question with that. You said you're meeting with the CEO of St. Joe's Hospital this Wednesday. Have you met with him prior to?
We texted, we converse on the phone, so.
Okay. And he feels, I guess my follow-up question would be, does he feel confident should the peak reach our area and we can handle? We're in a good shape from a standpoint, from a hospital standpoint?
So far, so good. The hospital actually has plenty of beds available right now. That is because, a couple reasons. People aren't going to the hospital where they might have otherwise for more minor issues. Also, they're not doing some of the surgeries, you know, maybe it's a knee replacement, or maybe it's, you know, something that can be put off. They're pending, not doing those right now. So there's, there's capacity at both hospitals, and there is, there is planning for an overflow facility right now. I can't elaborate on that, but there will be an overflow facility here locally, and it will, you know, there's, there's talk between all the healthcare providers, the health department, elected officials, as well as even the National Guard to assist with that. So that's in the works as well, should there ever be a need for it.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you for the information, thanks to the task force, all the efforts. This is probably my last time chiming in. I'd like to thank all those involved for this WebEx, setting this up, Mr. Stokes, Madam Clerk, President Hicksonbaugh, and all the others that were working behind the scenes to put this together fairly short notice. I think with the exception of Mr. Emmons sending his pigeon to respond, I think everything went very smoothly, and appreciate all the efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Matt Malenti. Any other questions for Mayor Wood, from those council members participating by phone?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you.
Captain.
Mayor Wood, thank you very much for all that information. Greatly appreciated, and it's things we need, we need to hear. Are you aware of any Mishawaka citizens who have tested positive for the coronavirus?
I am not personally aware of that. I am not, I don't have, I'm not privy to that kind of information, you know, through HIPAA and different, you know, protections that are out there, but also, we assume that some will already be through the hospitals, but we don't, I don't know. So we can assume that either had or victims, but what I don't know is if they are from Mishawaka or whether they are not.
I know we get numbers from the county. They don't break it out as cities down to that level?
Not that I have seen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Any other council members participating by phone who have a question for Mayor Wood? All right, hearing no one, I'll move to council members who are here in attendance. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Call if you need anything.
We will do so, thanks. We have one other item of new business, which is, in light of the altered election calendar in Indiana, we need to bring our council meeting schedule back into sync with it. As we're all aware, the primary that was originally scheduled for May is now going to take place in June. So the recommendation is to change our meeting dates for May, from May 6 to May 4 is our first meeting, and then our first meeting in June would be moved from June 1 to June 3. And at this point, the chair would entertain a motion from the council to make that change in our meeting schedule.
My question is, is, is this going to be a voting place? My understanding is that people will be voting by mail.
May I? Let's have a motion in a second, and that's actually the time that we should have a question post, so defer on that. Is there a motion to change our meeting dates as previously read in both May and June?
I'd make that motion to go with May 4 to June 3, President.
There's a second? Now, Madam Clerk, as someone who is intimately aware of the inner workings of the local election board, can you shed any light on Mrs. Volker's question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I participated in a WebEx election board meeting this afternoon. They are still working on what is going to happen, preferably that we have the vote centers, because that is what they'll be called now, everywhere that we have in the past, but they're also talking about tearing down. At this point, they have not made a definite decision to not hold seats. It's likely that this will not be a voting place, but I think we need to be prepared just in case.
Question, thank you, Mrs. Volker. Any other questions or comments from the council with regard to the motion? Hearing none, then I call for a question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMead?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Malenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Does the record show that it was a nine to zero vote to change those dates?
Thank you. Is there any other new business to come before the council? And we'll begin with those of you participating by phone.
Yes, Mr. President, Matt Malenti here. Just wanted to remind the public that the Neighborhood Watch meeting that is hosted by Mr. Hazen and myself for June will be canceled. That is it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malenti. Any of the other council members participating by phone who have a matter of new business to come before the council? Hearing none, any of the council members in attendance who have a matter of new business to share? Then let me end by.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Matt Malenti, I was looking at my, yes, I apologize. I was looking at my calendar for the changed meetings, and I said June, but I wanted to say, I'm looking to get my calendar together for April. April's meeting is canceled. The record could reflect April's Twin Branch Neighborhood Watch meeting will be canceled.
So noted. We'll chalk that up as karma for your smart alecky comment regarding Mr. Emmons' earlier appearance on your calendar, excuse you, Mr. Malenti, but thank you for that. Any other council members who have a matter of new business to bring before the council? Mr. Hazen, bear with Mr. Hazen as he, as he lumbers to the front of the room to become, to get closer to the microphone.
I just want to say thank you to President Hicksonbaugh, Clerk for putting all this together, IP department, and also the mayor for leading us through this, but probably more importantly, the city workers who have been out there and done it. This is a stressful time, a lot of what ifs, unknowns, and I think they're doing a really good job. They've held together and they're doing a good job, so just want to get that on.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Hazen. Anyone else? Then let me end by thanking everyone for their flexibility. Obviously, the first time out of the chute, you learned some things that you didn't know about conducting a city council meeting telephonically. And despite the glitches and the bumps in the road, I promise you that we will continue to work to make the process as efficient and seamless as we possibly can moving forward. For the record, the changes that we have instituted are consistent with not only the requirements of the current public health emergency, but also various executive orders that have been issued by Governor Holcomb, as well as related legal guidance. And we anticipate that we'll return to our normal meeting procedures at the conclusion of the public health emergency. In the meantime, physical attendance at council meetings will continue to be restricted in accordance with the relevant guidance related to limitations on public gatherings and social distancing. And during this health emergency, council members, as well as members of the public and the media, will continue to be afforded the opportunity to participate in council meetings remotely via telephone, and we hope to do an even better job with regard to live streaming and video access as well. As is always the case, recordings of council meetings, now that they exist, and then the minutes of the meetings will be made available to the public and the media as soon as is possible through the city website. And now that we have that legalese, if you will, out of the way, I'll add a few words of thanks from my end. First and foremost, again, I appreciate the flexibility and the patience of the council members and those few people who are in attendance here in the chambers as we have worked through tonight's agenda. I also want to add another word of thanks to the administration, and in particular, our city information technology department. Director Patrick Stokes and Brett Chubb are here with us this evening and have been of invaluable assistance in setting this up. Our friends at Michiana Access TV have also stepped up and been of great assistance, and we appreciate their help. I also want to acknowledge the work and support of my longtime friend and colleague, City Clerk Debbie Ledecky Block. I think it's safe to say that the City Clerk's office has always gone beyond the statutory requirements of the office to become a vital part of providing assistance to the council and to the community, and perhaps not, never more so than during these past several weeks. So I appreciate the work of Debbie and her staff to help us to conduct business, including this evening's council meeting. And then I also want to add and echo Mr. Hazen and Mayor Wood's comments, a word of thanks to our city employees who have really stepped forward and gone over and above during this time of crisis, you know, beginning with our police, fire, and EMS personnel, who are literally on the front line of the COVID-19 crisis, but also all other city workers who make sure that our city services and utilities continue to be available to the community. But of course, the good work that is done in Mishawaka goes beyond our city employees and extends to our healthcare workers. We've talked about them this evening, but they also are on the front lines at this time of crisis. Our food service and grocery store workers who have fallen into the category of first responders and probably never anticipated that they would. We have great work that's being done by our school administrators, our teachers, support staff, and the students to try to continue to provide good, high-quality public education in Mishawaka, and under difficult circumstances, they're succeeding. And really, a word of thanks should go out to everyone, wherever they work, whomever they work for, whether it's live and in person or remotely, who in this time of crisis has gotten up each and every day and gone and done the work that they need to do in order to help society continue to operate. And then finally, I want to acknowledge and thank all of us and every citizen in Mishawaka who's observed social distancing, as difficult as it may be, and has gone out of their way to check on neighbors, the elderly, people who are in need, and done everything they else, everything else that they can to try to care for other members of the community in this time of crisis. You know, there are undoubtedly some stormy seas that lie ahead of us, but I'm confident that we're going to be able to get through it as a community as long as we stand together as we always have. So please let us know as a council what it is that we can do to help. You can always contact us through the City Clerk's office. You can always contact us through the city clerk's office at 258-1616, and our individual contact information as council members is accessible through the City of Mishawaka website under the city council page. So with that, once again, thank you for everybody involved in making this evening happen, and a motion to adjourn is now in order. Meaning adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.